Please join us with the Our Father. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy name is holy, and Thy will be the honor of the nations. Give us this day our daily bread, and give us power to trespass against us, as we forgive those who trespass against us, and lead us not to temptation, but deliver us from evil. Amen.
And the pledge, please face the flag and repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the republic which stands in our nation's front line, and to the people whom we serve. Thank you. Come to the housekeeping notes, we ask presentations be limited to seven minutes, but we have no presentations tonight. Anyone can comment, any public comment, please limit your public comments to three minutes on any agenda item, your public comment must be on the agenda item as listed on the agenda. We will call for public comments at the beginning of the meeting as well as during each agenda item. Reminder, we are live streaming, the camera is up front as well as the speakers, so I ask that everyone keep it down in the audience, I will ask you to keep it down if I can hear you up here because then it will be picked up on the microphone, which causes conflict for online viewing, we are required by law to live stream our meetings, so that's why we do so. If you would like to comment or discuss anything during the meeting, we ask that you come to the front, you state your name for the record, and that way Kathy can put it into the record and then you'll have your three minutes to make your public comment, it is not a back and forth, and so we will allow you to make your public comment and then we'll move on. Counsel, I'd like to remind you that your microphones are on in order to allow for people to hear in the lobby. After your item is presented and your item of business is handled, you are welcome to leave quietly. We ask that you do so quietly so that you don't disrupt the meeting, but you can exit out this door to my left, your right, but it will lock behind you, so you will have to go all the way around if you want to come back in. Kathy and Ted, you're also invited to stay and listen to the full agenda if you so choose. We will now move on to public comments, are there any public comments on any agenda items prior to moving forward with the full agenda? Hearing none, moving on, personnel, item number one, to ratify the resignation of Captain Timothy Bovara from the Abbeville Fire Department effective November 12, 2025. I need a motion in a second to ratify.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion in a second, any questions or comments?
Yes, I have a question, not a comment, just a comment, just want to express thanks to his service and that we're going to miss him, and I think we need to look at the reasons maybe why we lose people, and but anyway, I want to thank you for your service.
Happy to discuss that with you, Councilman, if you'd like to know the reasons, not on the record though. Any other questions or comments?
That's retroactive to November 12, right?
Yes, yes, retroactively. Is Timothy Bovara in the audience? I was told he might be here tonight to speak, no? We do thank him for his service, we appreciate the time he spent at the fire department, and we wish him well in his future endeavors. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed, resignation is ratified. Moving on, approval of the budget reports, item number one, to approve the budget to actual report for the month of October 2025.
Move.
Second.
Motion in a second, any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, new business, item number one, to open a public hearing to receive comments from the public on a proposed ordinance to amend section seventeen thirty-two definitions, seventeen thirty-eight imposition of tax rates, and seventeen eighty dealer's commission generally. Counsel, I need a motion in a second to enter a public hearing.
Move, second.
Okay, I have a motion in a second, any questions or comments about entering a public hearing? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, we are now in a public hearing. We are in a public hearing to discuss some amendments to the proposed ordinances as previously listed, Board, you want to cover this, you want me to?
I don't have the.
Okay, Counsel, we've discussed multiple times in the last six months, the dealer's commission rate, which is currently in our ordinances of the two percent, two percent rebate if they pay within a certain amount of time. The parish tax collector, sales tax collector, which is the school board, held a meeting with all the taxing bodies in the parish, asked us, said that they needed us to come to a uniform dealer's commission amongst all the taxing agencies, we were at two percent rebate, somewhere at zero. At one point, the law changed to zero, then it changed back and said you can have up to two percent, it has to be all the same. Long story short, we were waiting on the rest of the taxing authorities to decide on what that commission rate is, they have all now passed one percent. A portion of this, seventeen eighty, is to change our dealer's commission from two percent to the one percent to align with the rest of the parish. Under seventeen thirty-two definitions, the law changed and we need to bring our tax, our sales tax ordinance in line with the state law, which defines digital products as a good, and so that's the amendment to seventeen thirty-two, it's just adding the words digital products as one of the category. And then under seventeen thirty-eight imposition of tax rates, as Board and I, the counsel for the city, were reviewing our tax ordinance to make these amendments that we needed to to keep up with state law, we notated that we had never amended the city ordinance to show the one point seven five percent sales tax that we are at. It still showed one percent, so we are recommending just to change the wording to align with what our actual tax rate is, and that are the, that is the three changes to the existing ordinance in our city, in our city ordinances, any questions or comments? Any questions or comments from the audience? Counsel? None, okay, so we can, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing?
Move.
Okay, motion in a second to close the public hearing, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries, we are now reconvening the regular city council meeting, and we are on item of business number three, to accept the recommendation of the city council to adopt an ordinance to amend section seventeen thirty-two definitions, seventeen thirty-eight imposition of tax rates, and seventeen eighty dealer's commissions generally. A motion in a second is on the table to make the recommended changes to ordinance, any questions or comments on that item? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes. Item number four, discussion with the property owner of 114 South Myrtle regarding the condition of the property and authorize any action needed.
The property owner's doesn't, he's got counsel as well, so instead of doing like we normally do with Chris, just kind of dresses y'all. Counsel was requested that I'm able to ask questions to Mr. Goto, so, Chris, can you come up?
Sure.
So what we'll do is, I'll just again ask him a few brief questions, let y'all know what we're doing over here, and then Mr. Landry will have the opportunity to ask some questions if he so chooses. So this is the property at 114 South Myrtle Street.
Property owner?
The owner is John J. Cassidy and J.J. Cassidy Hold.
And counsel's name for the record?
Didn't even counsel on Mayor Christian Landry about the J.J. Cassidy investments.
So, Mr. Goto, you know the property at 114 South Myrtle?
Correct.
Did you have an opportunity to inspect that property?
Yes.
And during that inspection, is there any two sheds on the property that you're seeking to get the council to vote for, to condemn? Okay, can you describe kind of for the council what you found when you examined these sheds?
Roof collapsed and several leaks, exposed or faulty wiring, fire hazard, broken windows, missing doors.
Pictures on the screen, Counsel, if you haven't had.
Walls bowing, leaning, and risk of collapse. Floor's unstable or sagging, pest or rodent infestation. Occupancy use poses risk to public welfare, requires repair, removal within thirty days.
So, in your opinion, after reviewing the sheds, is your opinion that they present a dangerous condition to the public?
Yes.
Is your opinion that these buildings are in a dilapidated condition?
Yes.
Did you submit a report to City Hall regarding this property? And y'all should have this in your packet, there should be a memo from press to prepare a white, is this, is this the memo?
Correct.
Christian, you have it?
I'm pulling.
No, not you, I'm sorry, Christian, hold on one second.
So in the memo, you know that the property located at 114 South Myrtle was inspected by you, following the inspection, you determined that the two structures, the storage sheds, located in the rear are dangerous and dilapidated, and both structures endangered the public welfare, and you're recommending that both structures be cleared up, taken care of before either repair or removal, was that the contents of your memo?
Correct.
I'm trying to get it, sorry.
And then, after the submission, Mr. Cassidy was provided a notice of today's hearing, at which time this council will consider condemnation, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, and y'all should have this in the packet as well, but this notice of hearing for condemnation of structure, do you recognize that?
That's right.
And that's the notice that was provided to him?
Correct.
And I'm also, that was said certified?
Yes.
And you, I don't know if y'all have this, and I don't know if you have.
It's in the packet, I'm trying to pull the packet.
Certification showed that, and I don't think, Mr. Landry's client dispute that he was noticing, that's why he's here. So what is your recommendation to the council regarding these two structures?
The little one in the back, I would recommend condemning it. The one in the front, the council wants to give him the opportunity to repair it. Possibly he'd have to tear down the back part of that shed in the front. As you can see, there's two holes in it, the roof's collapsing. There's a hole in the roof of the main shed. If he tears that off, maybe he can repair the other one, you know, that would be on him if he wants to spend the money to repair it, if not, I would condemn it.
So, in your opinion, as a Public Works Director, your recommendation to this council is to vote to condemn these sheds?
Correct.
That's her letter, sorry, one of them.
Hey, Chris?
You know? Yeah, I've got a few questions. Mr. Goto, you personally inspected this property?
Yes.
Okay, you said you, in your inspection, you had a checklist, and you checked off, under your markings, structural integrity, fire, electrical safety, environmental hazards. That was you that checked those?
Correct.
Okay, so one of those you had walls bowing, leaning, risk of collapse, floors unstable or sagging, did you actually enter into the structure?
No, I did not.
Okay, and then you said pest or rodent infestation, did you personally view pests or rodents inside those structures?
Roaches.
Okay, so that's the rodent or pest infestation. Are you an exterminator?
I'm a Public Works Director.
Okay, I'm not trying to be common sitting, I'm just asking this question.
Public Works Director.
Okay, and then it says occupancy use poses risk to public welfare. What exactly with these sheds is posing a risk?
Well, we have a lot of homeless in the area that could go in there, sleep in there, the building could fall on them, homeless could die in there, nobody would never find them until they started smelling.
Okay. One of them in these pictures, I don't think they're backed up on there, but it appears that Mr. Cassidy boarded up windows and doors, were those present when you inspected it?
That's pictures right here.
Yeah, so you saw those, those are your pictures?
Correct.
So were you able to get inside that structure?
No, but I was able to see on top of that crack right there.
Okay, but if you were a homeless person, could you get in that building?
In the back of it, you could.
How?
Show the picture of the back of it.
Sorry.
There you go.
It's not the same shed. Is that the shed, the little one, or is that the bigger one? There's a wall. Hang on, I'll let you talk later.
That back part is attached to that main building.
Okay, I'm just trying to understand, is this the little shed, or is that the big one?
The little shed is on the right, okay, and the big shed is on the left.
So the holes are on the big shed or that little shed?
The doors are open on the little shed, but holes in the roof. The big shed, that's the holes on the big shed, what you see in the back of that building there.
Did you observe any homeless people in any of the structures when you inspected it?
Of course not.
You also had a no wires from home to shed need to be in conduit, what does that mean?
Cannot have an exposed wire, that's an interior wire that could be exposed to the sun, so from the main house to the big shed, there's a wire that's running for power. There's a hot water heater on the side of that building. Whether the hot water heater is electric or gas, I don't know, but there's a wire running to it, and that wire has to be in conduit.
What if it was just removed completely?
Can be removed. That's the property owner's option.
So what led to your inspection of this property?
They wanted to transfer power from the owner of the property to a tenant.
So, but you didn't receive any complaints from any citizens about these two sheds?
No.
Okay, so it wasn't a complaint that brought this inspection up, it was a transfer of utilities?
Code enforcement violation. I do code enforcement also.
Okay, so what code ordinance is there in violation, did you cite?
Dangerous and dilapidated conditions, Board probably has the code.
Okay, well, you don't know that number?
I don't state numbers right offhand, get yourself in trouble when you do that.
Okay, but how is my client supposed to know what his ordinance violations are?
He's got the paper, he was sent it, he was noticed.
I don't see an ordinance.
He was noticed twice.
Can you cite to me and hear where the ordinance number is?
Well,
I'll say his, because he'd like to make repairs if it's cheaper than having to pay the city back for demolition or initial repairs. What I'm trying to find out today is, what is the city asking, what kind of repairs? Which is going to be one of my questions to Mr. Goto.
We could get to that when it's up to the council to vote, but yeah, we can talk about, the council will have the opportunity to vote whether or not to condemn the buildings, and then once that vote's made, then it can be decided on whether they will give an opportunity to repair.
I'm just trying to figure out, it's just arbitrary at this point, because if I had a shed in my backyard and it doesn't have a door on it, is it subject to condemnation because a homeless person could go sleep in?
Awesome.
It's on this one.
So, I mean, that's what I'm trying to figure out, there's barns throughout Abbeville, are all those barns subject to condemnation if a homeless person?
I'm not particularly on different properties, all I know is what we have before, today is this property. So, you have anything?
I'm just trying to figure out what my client can do to satisfy the council, the city, and, but he can't do that without knowing what's needed.
So, can, let me ask you this, Chris, there's two sheds.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know that the picture's too much justice, but can the smaller second shed be repaired? In your opinion, can it be repaired?
If you want to throw good money, after bad money, I mean, that's not for me to tell him he can't. My opinion, it needs to be torn down.
Okay, so, but the bigger shed, the shed in the front, could be repaired?
Could be, I mean, you got rot, maybe termite damage on the floor, how far does that go, who knows?
So ultimately, it's going to be up to the council, okay? Mr. Goto's recommendation, tear down the smaller shed and repair the first one, is that correct?
Correct.
You have anything more?
Yes, did you inspect the house that's on the property, actual house?
The exterior of the house.
Okay, what did that look like? Was it revamped and in good condition?
I've seen worse, I've seen better. There was a major water leak. Wire coming from the house to the shed needed to be put in conduit, and I had code violations on the sheds, that's my report.
I have nothing, I'm just like from Mr. Cassidy being able to pick up questions.
Okay, before we vote, yeah, if you don't mind just standing up, I'd like to.
Can I shoot me?
State your name for the record, please.
Can I shoot me, bro?
Yeah, Cassidy. Mr. Cassidy, you're the owner of the investment company that owns this property?
Correct.
Okay, have you put money into this property?
Absolutely.
Okay, have you updated the actual home that's located on this property?
Absolutely.
What are these two sheds, what are they used for?
The big one has construction materials inside of it, and like he said, there's a water heater on the side. The little shed was just always there for tenant use.
Okay, are your tenants using these structures?
No, they can use the back one, I don't want them to use the front one.
Have you boarded up those windows and doors?
Yes.
Okay, are there any utilities going to any of these structures?
No.
So nobody inhabits them?
No.
Prior to these notices, has anyone ever complained to you about these structures?
Absolutely not.
Have you been able to transfer utilities yet?
Nope, I still can't transfer utilities.
Have you observed any criminal activity taking place in these structures?
Absolutely not.
Jay, I just want to ask you, you received the notice for today, correct?
Correct.
That's all right. So now the council, the first decision that needs to be made is whether or not to condemn the property. By voting to condemn the property, you're not saying to tear it down, you're just saying that it satisfies the condemnation statutes, and just so y'all know too, our ordinances, tell you exactly. So the condemnation statutes in Louisiana, revised statutes thirty-three, colon, forty-seven, sixty-one, a few after that, and then our ordinances, specifically, section five dash seventy-one, under the due process, which is for demolition of buildings, we adopt that revised statute and those following statutes. So we don't specifically state in our ordinances what the requirements are, what we're supposed to do, we basically just adopt it, the state also has, so that's the procedure that we follow. So I think procedure, everything's been done correct. Council needs to vote whether or not to condemn the property. Once that vote's made, we can make, we can have discussion and a vote on what to do about the condemned property that we have, whether to allow them to repair, what repairs need to be made, that sort of thing. Your father, you have any questions?
Yeah, and which council is that home in?
District.
Which district?
Yes.
I'm not sure, Chris, do you know?
I'm for South Myrtle, who's South Myrtle, who's Myrtle south of? I might have it in here. It's one of y'all too, I just don't know which one because of where the line is.
It's on the line, it's west of Boulevard Exxon. That street, this Boulevard Exxon. I think that's you.
I have, Mr. Cassidy, when you got noticed, did you attempt to make repairs on the structures, just that you got noticed?
The building was like that, so after I got noticed, I did reach out to the mayor, Mr. Goto, on their definition of what repairs were, so I knew how to proceed, and nobody can give me a definition of what repairs mean to a shed. It's not an inhabited structure, it's not against a sidewalk, it's in the backyard of a rent house, you know, so it's boarded up, nobody can go in it, I didn't know what else more repairs meant, that's why I need to know from y'all what their definition of repairs are.
I will say, we set up two meetings with Mr. Cassidy, and he canceled on both meetings and did not attend either one. He was offered two opportunities to meet with both me and Board and Chris Goto to discuss all of the grievances and any issues he had. He canceled both meetings on the day of the meeting.
But these inspections that are going on, that's the ones y'all voted against, that's still going on. That's what y'all voted against in October.
We're not going to discuss anything other than what's on the agenda. What's on the agenda is this property and what's presented for the council now is to, somebody can make a motion to vote, or whatever motion they want.
Subsequent remedy after that.
Correct, correct.
Good, I'll make a motion.
What's your motion?
That's a motion to condemn those structures.
Do I hear a second on that motion? Hearing none, motion dies for lack of support.
I will make another motion for thirty days for the property owner to make the compliance with the report.
Well, I don't know that we can do that now, the idea is to, we'll have to see if it violates any other type of ordinance. If there wasn't a second and the motion didn't pass to condemn the property, then we can't vote on what to do with the property.
Okay, and the Public Works Director, that was the only, you had to follow that process before a time limit to make repairs?
So, the Public Works Director inspected the property, then sent the report over, requested this property be condemned, or not the main residential home on the property, but the two sheds in the back. That's what's on the agenda tonight, and that's failed to get a second, so.
Okay, and giving the structure utilities, status of that?
That is completely different. It's my understanding that the utilities are currently on the home. I don't know if Jake can answer that.
Utilities is placed, transferring it to the tenant, to their.
And it hasn't been transferred, not because of this issue that's on the agenda today. He hasn't passed inspection regarding, tell me, Chris?
Inspection, conduit, wire going from the shed to the house, and not repaired, the major water leak.
The water leak was repaired?
I don't know if there was, but we'll call back for reinspection.
So it does have power only because it was in Mr. Cassidy's name, but he wants to transfer it to the tenant, in order to do that, it's got to pass inspection. It did not pass inspection?
So we'll leave that between the Public Works Department and the owner?
If those things are repaired, are addressed, then he can, he can switch to.
I retract that motion.
The utilities are not being withheld because of these sheds.
Well, after the discussion tonight, he certainly should know what he needs to do, right? I mean.
Yeah.
Well, you don't have to do anything now that the motion is. But it has to be just like it are.
That's correct, that's correct.
You can't make him, but I'm just saying, perhaps you will.
Yeah.
And he can continue to have the utilities in his name.
He doesn't want the utilities in his name, but to transfer them, he's got to pass the inspection.
Right, that's what I'm getting at.
So if they haven't completed, then just.
Ask for reinspection.
All that needs to happen. That motion's handled, next, moving on. Item number five, discussion with the property owner of 214 South Leonard pertaining to the condition of the property and to authorize any action needed. Is the property owner for 214 South Leonard present?
Hi.
Say your name for the.
I'm Morgana Gates.
If y'all can keep it down in the back, I'm sorry, we have any trouble hearing up here.
Yeah, I'm not real loud either.
Morgana?
Morgana Gates, Bruce Art Gates. This is the estate of Wayne Bruce Art is the owner.
Right.
So Wayne Bruce Art, I have a lot, some more property. Bottom line is, we're going to tear it down, we have a permit in, in a permit application in the works right now. It hasn't been approved yet, that we're aware of, but it's, I think, called Presco, is the name of the company that is going to be tearing it down for us.
And I think you poured that permit this week or last, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
For Friday, might have been Friday.
It won't be, it won't be, Chris, correct me if I'm wrong, but it won't be approved until we are sure that there's no gas on the property and stuff.
Sure, utilities have.
Sometimes Center Point takes a little while, we do ours pretty quickly, but Center Point.
So you can have Wayne at Center Point to confirm that there's no gas line, just we're, we can approve the.
She will not get her actual permit until Center Point. Tell them there's no lot of gas on your property.
And how long that usually take, Chris?
It depends, two, three months, it'll go two weeks.
Okay. So as soon as you get the notice to proceed, is your intention to proceed immediately? So when you get that notice to proceed, within thirty days, we should see that demolition start and finish. So, when you get that notice to proceed, within thirty days, we should see that demolition start and finish.
Within two days.
Okay, so we will keep an eye on that one, um. I don't know if they need to take any actions, she, she has the permit, pulls and everything, we can just, we can.
So, to the council, they can vote to condemn it, they can vote to give her the time to do it herself?
It probably wouldn't hurt to go ahead and take the motion to condemn and approve condemnation since she's moving forward demolition anyway, right?
Yeah, I mean, it doesn't really matter. Uh, the only addition to that was, uh, there'll be some filing fees that would get, you know, she's willing to do it herself to avoid the, uh, cause, cause if we, if we vote and we do condemn it, then we have to prepare the order, file it with the mortgage records, and there'll be cancellation costs, so.
Probably be.
I would, you know, do we trust that she's gonna do it, if council willing to give her an opportunity?
It's my district, and since you, um, you're already into, um, taking care of business with your demolition permit, that sort of thing, I'll go ahead on it right at the time.
Thank you so much because they already have.
We'll, we'll keep an eye on it.
So, I would ask that the, I would ask that the council make a specific motion for a specific time, so that we can readdress it in.
It's a little hard to do that because we don't know when Center Point's gonna, I would say, go ahead, Chris.
But you can make the motion.
Thirty days after the demolition.
Thirty days after Center Point secured utilities, uh, she has to tear it down. Cause I've seen some cases where it gets started to tear it down, and I'm not saying she's gonna do this.
Yeah.
But then I'll have the council calling me about why it's not finished being tore down. So, if you give them thirty days, then, um, maybe the city goes on and finishes cleaning it up and then charges the property on them.
I re, I recommend a, a, a thirty day post-issue of demolition permit be the timeline if y'all are looking for the words for your motion. Councilwoman, that's up to you.
Yeah, yeah. I move, uh, for the thirty day, um, post demolition.
Post demolition.
Permit.
Permit. Um, motion in a second to give thirty days after the issue of the demolition permit for, uh, the property owner to clean up the property and tear it down the structure. Any questions or comments?
I just have one. So, now, within that thirty days, we're under the understanding that if Center Point.
It's thirty days post the issuance of the demolition permit? So, when Center Point does it, that starts to block on the thirty.
She'll have thirty days to do it. Is that adequate, adequate time to get it done?
Yes, okay.
Yes, okay.
You understand that if you don't do it within that time, they'll bring it back to council, they'll do it themselves, and then charge the property.
Okay, thank you for being here.
All right, thank you so much.
Carry the problem, we appreciate it.
Absolutely.
All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number six, discussion with the property owner of seven-one-eight South IJ Joyner pertaining to the condition of the property and authorize action, any action needed. Is, is the property owner of seven-one-eight?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Bernadine Rita.
How is Bernadine?
Bernadine Rita.
Rita. R-I-T-E-A-U-T. Thanks. Ms. Bernadine, um, you are the owner of the trailer?
Yes.
It's, it's in, is it your husband? Did you see your? What is your intention with the property?
Okay, well, I had someone who was trying to help me, like, fix it up, but they got sick. So, um, say, when he feel better, he was trying to help me fix it since I had insurance on that. And, but insurance people told me, they gave me, um, well, I could try and fix it, you know, before I put the insurance back on it until I kind of take y'all.
Okay, uh, this, this property is on it because the, the neighboring property owner called about, um, there was a family of possums living underneath it. There's a bit of issues with the property. Um, I saw that there's some case files that go back on the parcel that it's on since twenty-twenty-two in our current system. Councilwoman, I think that's your district.
It is.
Would you like to speak to?
Um, yes, I'd like to know, um, your intent, because it's bad. Um, and like you said though, we had neighbors call, and I saw pictures of what was coming out of the mobile home, and everybody's trying to keep that out of their home. So, what is your intent? And if you're going to repair, we need to, if, if you're going to repair and serious about repairing that, I want a definite timeline from when you leave here tonight, when you're going to start, and how long will it take? So, that person that is, uh, sick and can't assist you right now, maybe you can, um, find someone else.
Everybody is so busy. The one I really had, you know, he took sick, but he say he was feeling a lot better, you know, from that mouth.
What, what, can you give me a description of the detailed work that you're planning? Where, uh, what are you?
Well, um, the windows and the door. But I avoided it because of the storm, and then I avoided it because I had a house on the side and y'all, uh, redemolished that. And, uh, I didn't want no one to get in.
Uh, Ms. Rita, what are you planning on doing with the trailer, if, if you meet the code specifications? You, you gonna rent it or you gonna?
No, sir, I'll just have one of my kids move back. You know, if I get it up to date. But I'll, I can't, uh, you know, I'll just have to have it demolished, I had the, um, house done.
Um, I, I, I would, if you don't mind, council, I would like to let Chris give his, um, report, cause he did do a report, if you don't mind. Chris?
Yeah, I don't mind.
Chris?
Trailer presents a dangerous and dilapidated condition. Um, there's holes in it. We have pictures of it. Um, I can't tell if it's raining in it, probably raining in it from the pictures. Um, I've been chasing this property for quite some time, uh, between council people calling me, the neighbors, um, and whoever else wanted to make a complaint against this property. Um, but this is what we, this is what it's led to right here, me going over there, having to take pictures of a property that wasn't taken care of. Um, it's not fair to the neighbor next door, the brush in the backs touching the trailer, uh, the back of the yard hadn't been cleaned in I don't know how long. It's not fair to the neighbor and the kids that live next door. So, that's, there it is, right there. It's up to the council to do what they gotta do with it.
Ms. Rita, how can you let the property get in such condition?
No. We clean the property every month. We clean it now. I don't know if they trashing it, the neighbors, because they do all kind of stuff, the neighbors. Who put their trash can in front of my house, they don't want nothing in front of their house. They, like, um, killed my flowers and everything, so I really don't know what's wrong with them.
I mean, when you had the opportunity to make repairs before you got into that dilapidated condition.
It was a little bit ahead of time, so.
I'm going to, I'm going to recommend that, um, on this property, uh, Ms. Bernadine, I'm going to, um, ask the council, uh, make a motion to, um, grant you thirty days only, thirty days only, to do some repairs, and if not, but I'm going to condemn that property tonight, condemn. So, I need a motion. I'm making a motion to condemn.
I'll second.
The property tonight.
Yeah, vote over.
Yeah, I'm gonna, we're gonna take a motion for that, and then we'll have a discussion about what those specifics of what those repairs are gonna need to be, right, Bart?
Correct.
Okay, so, do you, would you like to say anything else before we vote?
No, just, just tell me what, you know, will, will y'all give me time to, to fix it?
I'm going to grant you thirty days.
Okay.
Thirty days, but now, thirty days, once, what that means is that once, um, the, um, supervisor go back and does that inspection, if that's not up to code, if that's not up to code, well, then we're also, we're making that motion to condemn, and that means that it has to come down.
Okay, so we currently have a motion and a second on the table to condemn the property. We're gonna take a vote on that, and then we'll go into some more detail. I think that's the cleaner way to do it, right? So, the motion and the second right now is to condemn the property at seven-one-eight South IJ Joyner. Right?
Yes.
Okay, any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Did we not get a second? Yeah, we got a motion and a second. I don't know who's the peanut gallery in the back, but we have a motion and a second. Ms. Raven, thank you for your preliminary procedure advice, but we got it up here, okay? All right, um, so, Ms. Rita, the, the property has been condemned, and the councilwoman granted you thirty days to do repairs to the property, and you want further advice as to what those repairs need to be. You said windows and doors, operable, operable, windows and doors that stop water intrusion into the property. This really should come from Chris Gootrow and not me, but.
I mean, the roof sagging on the trailer, windows, doors, the hot, I think it's the hot water thing, closet on the side, the doors down, um, to be honest with you.
It's, it's gonna cost more than.
Now, she's, thirty days is not enough time to get this trailer repaired. I mean, the lady's being put behind the eight ball from the start, thirty days. You can't repair this in thirty days.
And when you do it, is it even livable on the inside?
No, have it, grant, they helped me tear it down.
Well, here's the problem. We should've done that. It's a three-year process, right? So, this was si, sitting in this condition when the property next door was put on the grant. Why they weren't both put on the grant then?
Want to.
Right, but it was in the exact same condition then, right? So, now, now we're asking to put it on the grant, which might mean another three years of it sitting there deteriorating. I mean, I don't have an issue with putting it on the grant, but I don't think that it's fair to leave it in this condition for another three years.
We can't do that, and then that's not guaranteed.
And it's not guaranteed.
The grant money is not guaranteed this year. I mean, we may get.
Haven't even put the application in.
Uh-huh.
The application's not even due yet, so it's three years from the time now till we would even start maybe demoing properties. I'm not sure why. I understand wanting to save it.
Yeah.
I think it's just continuing to deteriorate, and in my opinion, beyond being saved, but I'm not a contractor.
Well, if y'all can help me get a, some bins, I could, you know, add enough in the foundation to help get a bounty. Yes, I don't have the money to pay for the bins, because after so many days, there's charge every day.
I'm gonna let the city attorney address that because.
It's up to the council, I mean, y'all, y'all took action, you voted the property is condemned. Now, you just have to decide, and somebody needs to make a motion on what to do?
Well, we can't pay for bins for her to, no, that's, that's paying for a private purpose. We can't pay for the bins. That's where I was asking you to address. Um.
That would be a, don't make you actually.
Yeah, can't move that.
And you could give her the thirty days like you said, and see what kind of progress, and, you know, if there's significant progress, then we can make a decision based, you know, council, make a decision at that point.
And in the thirty days, if there's significant progress, and Chris would just make the recommendation to allow them to continue, it doesn't come back to this council unless she fails to meet a thirty-day timeline to, with significant improvement, then it would come back to potentially bid it out, right, Bart? Is that correct?
It doesn't need to come back at all. Once the council votes to condemn, then you have to, Chris, what to do. He, he would have the authority to do what he wants at that point.
I'll second the motion to grant her thirty days, and just advise her that.
Wait, I don't know if we have a motion yet. We had a motion, took a vote.
Yeah, I have a second to be voted on.
Yeah, now we're talking about timelines.
Yeah.
And, and we have a public comment, so we're gonna allow the public comment?
Sure, thank you very much. Um, my name is Raven St. Julian, Peanut Factory back. Um, but, um, I want to ask a question about the last meeting. I think we spoke about something that was a grant or something that is coming about that she can apply for, and it's not, if it's approved, then she would.
That's what we just told.
So, she does have that option, and that's why I'm up here.
No, what we said is that there is a grant, like, another round of funding.
It's coming.
That would be three years probably before the, the, the tearing down would happen. That opportunity was on the table three years ago, and she, she declined to put the trailer on because she wanted to do repairs three years ago.
Right, I understand it, but my question is, when is the application date open?
I don't know the date, answer that, but it's not.
It's not on the table.
It's next, next year, there's another round of funding next.
And that's when the application will open.
But then.
Now it'll be too late.
But then also, let's keep in mind, and let me publicly say this, that even if her name was put on the list for the grant money, we had properties this year that did not make it, that did not make it, yeah.
Um, there's no one currently living in the, I know you have utilities, but is there anyone currently living in it?
Just here, we moved, and to be finished on the camera, but I was on the camera as I go. I don't know who keep getting, breaking up stuff, but I don't know. But that's why I had them.
But, but surely, it's a lot of work to be done there, and, um, I, I wish I had means to help you with, um, the, um, I know trailers that she asked us to, um, we can't do that, that's not legal, the dumpster, yeah, that's not legal, um.
I'll forward thirty days to, is your, is your recommendation still thirty days?
Yes.
So, in thirty days, if there is no progress, then we will move forward or try and do.
Yeah.
Well, I'll second her motion to grant her thirty days, advising her that thirty days starts now.
Chris, what, what?
So, in thirty days, if she changes out one window, do I give her more time?
Uh-uh, that's not progress. Progress is the windows changed. You said there was something to the roof. You also said that, um, what it was that you're about, um.
Inoperative doors.
Yes, inoperative doors, no, not just changing one window. You and I both know that's not prepared. That's just. Yeah, I, I understand that, listen, I do understand that, but let me make clear while we're on here, and then we can move on, because my decision is made, um, on, on Sunday. On Sunday, I had to call out the APD to meet me at a vacant property on the corner of Maude. Somebody is window broken, and somebody is sleeping in there, and the neighbors are really, really frightened. Those are the things that when everybody else is in their comfort zone and sleeping, these are the things that neighborhoods go through, uh, because, um, people are breaking in their properties, getting in, sleeping, and so they found a home in that house, and the neighbors around there, they are frightened. They are frightened.
And, and, and not to go to, but the next thing that happens is someone gets in the structure, and then now we're in a winter season, starts a fire in a vacant structure that can spread to other houses. So, there's, there's public safety reasons while we're addressing vacant structures that need to be condemned. I'll allow you one more time.
One more time, and this is just for the council, not you mayor, because you don't have a. What's the difference between Jay Cassidy and what you're telling her? He, he did not get a second. What's the difference?
Because that, because on Jay Cassidy property, you can look at me like that, not one person complained about his property. The neighbors in this area, they're complaining about that, and if you would see, have saw pictures of the rodents that are coming out of there, that other people are scared will get in their home, that's the difference. That's, so, now, and that's somebody else's district. This is my district right here. And when I get the call, Chris get the call, the mayor and Chris ride out and get the complaints. If I don't act on it, then that's invading.
Exactly, well, you should've seconded the other.
Okay, that's your opinion.
That's your opinion, ma'am. This is the Christmas holiday, it's more like, start back in January to, to. People might not want to work on holidays.
It's true.
Okay, I'm gonna call, will someone call for a question?
Call for a question.
Okay, question has been called. Bart, are we gonna take a motion? Do we need to take an action for the thirty days, or is it just added to that motion? Do they need to vote on it? Yeah. Yeah.
No, but we need to take an action because the property's been condemned.
Okay, so.
So we need to take.
In the form of a motion.
Can be done.
Councilman, councilwoman, thirty days to repair the structure, that's still your motion. And we had a second by Councilman Campbell, and question has been called, so we're going to take a vote. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. You have thirty days.
Yeah, thirty days will be from, uh, the date of this order, um, preparing, so.
So it might be tomorrow's day or. Whatever day he completes it, which I assume is either today or tomorrow's day, he'll have the order, and we'll, we'll make a note in Kathy, that we bring it back up, should, well, if we don't. Okay, moving on. Item number seven, discussion and possible action to determine, to determine. Hold on, I'm gonna wait just a second because I want Bart to pay attention for this one, and he's doing something right now, so. Give me one minute, please. Yeah, I don't think he's, I think he's gonna advise us that we don't need any action, but I still think it's worth a brief discussion to discuss what the ordinance says. Okay, Bart, you ready?
Yeah.
Number seven, discussion and possible action to determine if dogs owned by Stephen Huntsberry are considered dangerous dogs under the City of Abigael Code of Ordinance. Go ahead, Bart.
We don't need any action, we just put it on the agenda to discuss, um, the incident that occurred, and so I can basically just advise the council on the current, um, ordinance. So we have an ordinance that declares dogs dangerous or vicious. Uh, most situations require an incident and then a report done by, um, Ms. Debbie Garrow is our person that does it for the city, and she makes a recommendation.
Hold on, she does it for the police jury. She's a police jury employee, but she is a dedicated person. I just wanna make sure everybody understands she is not an employee of the city.
Right.
Okay.
She's a dedicated person that does the report, makes a recommendation on whether, um, the council should vote to, to label this a specific dog as a dangerous dog. However, in the ordinances, uh, there are certain breeds that are automatically included as dangerous dog. So I know the incident that.
I'm gonna get to the background.
Sure.
Real quick, I'm gonna do briefly, I know there's a neighbor that has asked to speak. Also, Chief Horry's up, which is good, because I was gonna ask him, I had called to see, and I don't know that they ever issued a citation, so I wanted an update on that, but on, um, actually, more than a month ago, I know that councilwoman Bruce sort, as well as the neighbors, were complaining about some dogs that were on, is it Whitney? Whitney Drive.
Matthews.
Matthews, I'm sorry, I always.
I'll call Whitney.
Yeah. Um, and Chris Gotrow and I rode out there, uh, Chris had inspected it also, and that there were ten dogs in a Cajun structure. The structure did have, um, a tarp around it. Uh, you know, we had a discussion with the property owner at that time. Um, and after that discussion, we, we felt that the, the, there was no violations that we could pursue at that time with the dogs in the structure and the homeowner, based on the fact that he wasn't, you know, there was a lot of things. Anyway, on November twenty-first, we received a call, um, that, uh, the neighbor shot one of the dogs. Uh, and so the police went out there and APD called Chris Gotrow, and, um, we called with Public Works, uh, and, and had an in-depth discussion. The police officer responds to the call, felt like, um, the dogs should be removed from the property, given the circumstances. And so that set off the discussion, uh, with the, the city attorney, and we made multiple calls to, um, to the, uh, Deputy Ms. Garrow. Um, I know that she talked to Chris once, I don't think she ever returned Bart's calls, um, about the declaration of dangerous dogs. So that is why it's currently on the agenda for discussion. One, so that we can all clearly understand what the ordinance says moving forward, uh, and there's no more confusion as to that. Um, two, so that we can get an update from the chief, and three, to allow the neighboring property owner, as well as maybe councilwoman if she'd like, uh, to speak on the dogs in question. And I don't know, we've called to get an update on whether or not the dogs have been removed from the property. Chief, do you have that update?
I just, I just have one thing, and it needs to be everything up to this.
Okay, let, let chief, let chief speak first, then if you don't mind, so we know the first state.
The officer's following up with Mr. Stephen Huntsberry.
Yep.
Uh, my understanding is, uh, like you said, one of the neighbors shot the dog, and the dog got, was.
Got loose.
From the fence, uh, who shot, uh, trying to go after the man. Well, when he called, the officers responded, and right now, they're in the process of removing all the dogs. My understanding is animal aid is supposed to be moving, removing the dog at Mr. Huntsberry's request. That's the last thing I have on it, and I just read this in the last couple of days.
Okay. And, uh, just so that, and, and if, if they would return the city attorney's phone call, um, he, that she would already know.
I didn't go to Ms. Garrow, all I did was read the assignment sheet from the supervisor on duty.
Right, so those dogs, by definition, if they have pit bull or rottwaile in them, they are by definition in our ordinance as dangerous dogs, whether, whether animal control wants to declare them as such or not, is not within their latitude, is that right? City attorney.
I understand. If I could pass one thing on, I did see some video, and there are some pit bulls.
So there are, so the answer, and, and we can elaborate this more with, and we can visit with the property owner. One, the dogs must be registered. They must be inoculated. And if they are dangerous dogs by definition, which we pretty much have determined they are, then they need, there are more circumstances for that property owner or that owner to have it, not just the kitten has to have a concrete base to the kit, to where they can't tunnel out. There's specifics laid out in our city ordinance that if they are those breeds, the council, they are by definition dangerous, and thereby, there are additional requirements for that person to retain ownership of those dogs. And so that property owner is gonna have to come to this council, I believe, and, um, and discuss that with this council, is that right, Bart?
Sure.
The owner of the dogs, right? So that being said, I would like to let the neighbor speak to it, come up and say your name for the record, and say what you have to say.
My government name?
Yes.
I'm farming the machine. These dogs are vicious. I mean, I live right across the street, um, I don't allow my nieces and nephews to go past that way, because I don't even go past that way when I'm walking, because they in attack mode, like, every day, all day. And he had, before this incident, he had them all lined up on the fence line. Like, all of them, on a chain lined up against the fence line. I've seen animal control come out several times, just to give them dog food.
Which is a violation of our laws if they're not, if they're not registered vaccinated.
Exactly, and, I mean, you, I've seen one dog got her loose, a little puppy got her loose from the neighbor, went in the yard, and they just tore it to pieces.
Tore it to pieces.
So just think if, I mean, and the, 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 it's no doubt in my mind, if that incident wouldn't have happened, he would have, it would have been bad. And he don't even live on the property, so what if, what, a dog get her loose? You have to go get him to come in.
I, I was there, uh, this morning at six forty AM, and all the dogs were still there.
Yeah, when I left home.
I backed up several times to be able to count it. I stopped counting at five, so they're still.
I counted seven.
Seven, okay.
There were ten, I think.
There were ten, but I think when the incident happened, they did take two.
Yeah. I counted five, and you know, um, we'll move on from this, um, but I also wanted to say too, this is a family property that's also brought on some problems with the family, which I advised them that they had to take that to, um, family court. But there should be, um, in our ordinance, uh, ordinance where, um, unless there's a, uh, the family does a succession, no one person should be able to move anything on that property because it creates problems. I've been having problems with that property and its own, the, the children for like the last seven to eight months. And, and so avoid, me being involved in a family feud, I advise all of them, the best thing to do is hire an attorney and open up a succession and go to court with it. But it's been a huge problem for the last seven, eight months, if not longer.
And I've also had questions, uh, about the property, and my advice was seek counsel, because I, I'm not a lawyer, I can't tell you what to do.
Yeah.
There is, but it's a family thing. And maybe someone in the family who owns the, uh, portion of the property may be in the audience, he might wanna say something.
Is there someone in the audi- in the audience who is a portion property owner? No?
Maybe you only have the dogs here, nobody gets here.
I don't disagree with that, maybe that's a change we need to put in our ordinance. You know, it's, uh, anyway, we probably need to look at that too, but, but I would say, Bart, most likely for the next meeting, we need to invite or make sure Mr. Huntsberry is here, as well as animal control, um, so we can speak to, um, clarifying what the ordinances and policies are of the city to make sure there's no future confusion in that, in that area, as well as make sure that both of them understand, uh, what is going to be required for him to retain ownership of the dogs anywhere in the city's limits, even on that property.
And I witnessed that, and I don't, the dogs wasn't like that. When he got, he would beat them, he would holler at them, he would, he made the dogs vicious. He did that. And they wanted me to get video, but I couldn't stand, I would be in my house and I could literally hear him cussing the dogs, I'm gonna beat the dog.
I think all we have to do is put it back on the gym and just sit it below.
Okay. So we had, we had done this becau- at first when we thought that y'all needed to declare them dangerous, but after reviewing the ordinance again, I don't think that's even required, because by ordinance, by ordinance, if they have pit bull in them, they are automatically dangerous dogs, there's no additional action needed by this council. But he needs to come here, as well as animal control, and answer to, uh, what's gonna be, what, what, what needs to happen. Um, that being said, we don't need any action, we just thought it was worth a discussion, and, uh, that way we could get some updates from the chief. Any further public comment before we move on? Hearing none. Item number eight, approved payment of estimate for partial payment number eleven, final payment, releasing retainage in the amount of forty-nine thousand seven ninety-four forty-seven payable to Glen Leger Construction LLC relative to the Graceland Avenue and Sidewalk Improvements Project. Motion and second, any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Option, uh, item number nine, to approve payment of estimate for partial payment number one in the amount of sixty-two thousand one eighty-seven oh six payable to Glen Leger Construction LLC relative to the Abigael Criss Crest Memorial Airport Construction Hangar Development Area Project.
Ooh, second.
Motion and second, any questions or comments? Projects moving along? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number ten, discussion and possible action to authorize the city attorney to file suit against the property owner of one-one-one-zero Maud Avenue to recover damages in the amount of two thousand five eighty-two eighty-six incurred by the city as a result of the negligence of aforementioned property owner. Uh, council, you have, or not council, attorney.
This is, the, uh, council took action about a month ago, a little over emergency action. We had some, uh, we had a, a citizen that did some work on that property and broke some lines of the neighbor, creating some sewage issues. And, uh, Chris, uh, asked the council to take action to be able to fix that problem, and we did. So this lawsuit would be brought against that property owner to recover the cost that the city, uh, spent fixing the problem he created.
Did y'all provide us a copy with the, um, item on?
It's a contractor that was, that did the work. It is ten, it was actually the contractor who had previously done work on the woman's property.
You want the amount?
And he was already, go ahead. I don't, I don't see a copy of my, I don't see a copy of my, my, uh, thing, but we can get that for you.
Okay.
Um.
The amount is, well, the amount's on the agenda.
Yeah, I have the amount, but, um.
I don't know that it's item on, I think it's just an invoice, which, uh.
Because they would have an hourly rate or, um, we had to rent any, um.
We didn't do work.
That's the contract.
Okay, contract.
Uh, the invoice, it's a flat rate. It says repair and place water, uh, water and drain lines damaged by excavator at the property, material labor and excavator.
So that's the contractor's deal. Yes, and, and there was a, there was a discussion with the marshal and the contractor and the person who caused the damage, who took full responsibility for it, said he would pay the contractor in full for the repair. And then when the contractor wanted to bill him, and the marshal tried to serve him with the bill, would not answer calls or, uh, take responsibility for the repair. And that is why we're having to file suit, um, and lien the property to get payment on the invoice that he admitted responsibility for.
You need a motion?
I think we, do we, yeah, I need a motion in a second, we did not get one. Motion in a second, any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number eleven, discussion and possible action to allow the purchase of material for metal building at twenty-five, um, in twenty-twenty-five, Chief Mike Horry.
Yes, Mayor and Council, uh, we have a slab, we built a slab in the back of the police station. With the recommendation of, uh, Mr. Gotrow, we had, uh, the city concrete guy come and lay the slab for us. I'm in the process of looking at a building, a metallic building, they come here and they build it on there for you. Uh, I've got quotes from two different contractors that do this. Uh, the total, I told Ms. Kathy at first it was gonna be just under ten thousand, but with the upgrades I did, it went to ten thousand one hundred dollars. I am paying for this out of our action report fund that we have for the police department, and I'm just wanting to get it ratified that, by you. If you have any questions, I will answer any questions you have.
I know, second.
And the main reason I'm doing this is because I wanna get the gas-powered vehicles out of the, the contained, the building in the backside of the police station, uh, subject to fire, because there's a hot water tank inside.
A bigger building, you said?
It's twenty-four by twelve.
I'm gonna say this, um, chief, your, your budget's already eleven percent over budget. Um, you have about a thousand dollars left in the budget for Fund Oh Four, which you're proposing, but you do have the cash, right? So this is going to mean an amendment to the budget that we just reviewed to add the eleven thousand dollar expense, because you're gonna be.
I haven't reviewed the budget yet with you.
Well, you don't review it with me, you were gonna review with him.
The CPA, yes, ma'am.
Yeah, but you're already eleven percent over budget. You wanna spend money within, with, which is within your cash, that's fine. But we need to make sure that in the next meeting, we amend his budget, because otherwise, it's going to be, I mean, five percent is our variance that we're allowed. He's already eleven percent over, so we just need to make the amendment to Fund Oh Four, show in the expense in twenty-twenty-five, right, chief?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Um, because, because that budget's already, it's already been funded, so, okay. Um, motion in a second, any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Will you make a note to let, um, the budget?
I'll get you a real number tomorrow, Kathy.
So that you can adjust that. Okay. All business, none. Departmental report of engineers. Pardon?
I just reported that the demolition contractor is scheduled to be here next week. Whether cooperating, uh, he should get, get working that time.
Okay, thank you. Any news on the sewer line? That air bounce, where are we with that?
They are getting the materials, they're getting some precast manholes made, uh, they actually installed the one that goes in the pump station. So they're proceeding, and hopefully they'll be on site in the next couple of weeks.
And have we ever heard from the other contractor about the unfinished building?
They're actually painting, they just about finished painting the pump station.
And the roof?
The roof, uh, they said they're bringing somebody in to fix it, and our inspectors told them what they needed to do, so.
Okay, so you keeping an eye on that?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Anything else, Todd? Any questions for Todd? Nope, Kim?
Uh, nothing.
Attorney, Ford?
Nothing.
Public Works Director, Chris?
Nothing.
Parks and Recreation, Byron? Toys for Tots?
What's that?
Toys for Tots.
Oh, and a little bit with basketball, too. Um, okay, Byron Dozier, public, public, uh, Parks and. Um, okay, Byron Dozier, Public, Public, Parks and Rec Director. Um, this weekend, we're hosting Toys for Tots, uh, annual tournament that we do, uh, Winter Foul Nationals for baseball. I'm not sure how many teams yet, but, uh, we will have some teams in town, schedule will be finalized tomorrow night. Um, that'll be played Saturday and Sunday of this weekend. Next week, on the 12th, we will start our Biddy Basketball League games, uh, where we'll not play the 13th, as we have another function here in the beautiful city of Abbeville, and then we'll resume play on the Sunday. Um, and then after that, schedule's kind of chopped up with the holidays, uh, make sure everybody spends time with family and friends. Um, also on the Biddy Basketball side, um, yesterday, uh, was able to get us the contract for the eight-year-old regional tournament. Um, Biddy Basketball Regional Tournament, so we'll have that coming in February. Um, other than that, I'm also working on invitational tournaments, uh, I'll probably do it the same weekend so we can have a bunch of teams in town instead of, uh, where I'll do the ten, ten-year-old division and twelve-year-old division all at the same time. Kind of packed, uh, the parish a little bit, um, other than that, any questions?
Great job to you and Kristen both, uh, that activity is wonderful to see.
Thank you, sir, thank y'all.
Thank you Byron, any questions for Byron other than that? Nope, okay, um, Mayor, Christmas Stroll. We, today we made the decision to postpone the Christmas Stroll, so instead of being this Thursday, it will now be December 11th, next Thursday, 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM. Cajun Christmas Celebration, December 13th, 11:00 AM to 5:30 PM, parade begins at 5:30. Um, so that's actually two opportunities since the holiday spirit here in Abbeville in the same week, twice the fun. Um, Junior Auxiliary of Vermillion Holiday in the Square, December 19th, 5:30 to 8:30. Um, and then we are still collecting new unwrapped children's books for our local schools through December 11th, every donation makes a difference. Um, I did want to acknowledge and thank, but I don't think we have the list, then gets to visit with you, of the tree sponsors.
Yeah, I'm glad it...
What I want to say, so we, if you haven't noticed, although we struggling with the squirrel problem right now, um, the, the oak trees in downtown have additional lights. We said they help to make our, our Christmas a little brighter. Um, I'm gonna name them, I'm gonna try to name them all from memory while she brings it up, but I know Glen Leger Construction, Sellers and Associates, Darnell Sykes and Frederick, Bruceard Brothers, Mr. Gene Sellers. What am I missing? I feel like...
Dupree's, uh, I'm trying to find them all. Darnell, Sykes and Frederick's, Bruceard Brothers, The Sellers Group, Dupree's, Sellers and Associates, Glen Leger Construction, here it is, I just found it, and then Mr. Gene Sellers.
So they were our private sponsors who paid to make our Christmas a little brighter and light up the oak trees. They're not finished, we're gonna add a little bit more, they gotta come in and fix the parts that the squirrels messed up. But thank you to these sponsors, please patronize the businesses if you can, we appreciate their contribution. And that is all that I have, I hope that you'll join us for the holiday events. Um, next is, is it Council, or is it my binder?
Please Chief.
Please Chief, Chief Mike Hoary, you have the floor.
Just got that, small things. Did schedule a meeting with risk management today for, um, safety and anything else that they bring up that maybe we can do around the police station, that is set up for the weekend of the fifteenth, the week of the 15th, 16th, I think. We talked about it already, but I'd like to formally request to meet with the city CPA, uh, to have some input on that four million dollar, twenty, twenty-six budget.
Yeah, you just have to call them and schedule it.
Okay, okay. Uh, number three, uh, I put everybody to list on your desk. That's Abbeville PD, right before I took over, and Abbeville PD's, uh, close right now. Just to have, that way you have an idea who our, our officers are. Also, you can contact me if you have a question about them. The one that is light on one of the shifts is the guy that we hired last week, he goes to work on the 10th. Okay. Uh, also to let y'all know that we do have security that is lined up for all the special events that we'll be putting on for the city of Abbeville, so everything is lined up, the parade is lined up, security is lined up for that. Uh, Chris and I talked today about the, uh, the stroll and, uh, we have that lined up too, that was the last one I did.
I don't know if they, if Rainey met internally, but I don't know if we relayed that message to y'all yet.
The new date?
The new date, but the new date comes with two conflicts. Um, there is something going on in Magdalen Place, that is, the Council on Agents having a fundraiser, so we need to maybe look at how do we make sure that they're allowed to get in and out parking and maybe we might have to reroute the train route a little bit, but we'll talk about that. Um, and then the other thing that's happening is...
The art.
Arts, there's the, uh, meet the artists at the Cultural Center, shouldn't cause too much conflict, mostly parking issues, but we might have cars going in and out. So we just need to meet, meet into...
As long as the guys know about it, we'll be okay.
Rethink that for the, for the new date of the stroll, thank y'all. Okay, anything else for the chief? Nope, um, Far Chief, Chief, Chief Mayor? Nothing? Okay, um...
I have questions, Chief.
Okay, go ahead.
Be fine where you are, I'd like to hear you. I've got a real big concern tonight, and I'm gonna explain it carefully here, hopefully. But in February 14th of 1991, we had a serious fire at fourteen oh eight Louisiana Street. That fire, the fire department was able to get there, they saved the house, unfortunately, we lost three children there in that fire. But I'd say that because of response and how, how things can happen quickly and how dangerous it can be. I don't know if the rest of the council is, is aware of this, but I found out about this and went took a picture at Substation Two, which is on Joffrey Street, it's in, uh, in, uh, Councilman, uh, Hardest District. And this was during the day, and that fire station was closed for 24 hours, okay? And that was 11, that was the day before Thanksgiving. Now, here's, here's what's happening the month of November. On the 15th of November, Sub One on the bypass was closed for 24 hours. On the 20th of, of November, Sub Two, that's Joffrey Street in His District, was closed for 24 hours. On the 23rd, Substation Three in Maud Avenue was closed for 24 hours. The 24th, Sub One bypass, again, was closed for 24 hours. 26th of November, Substation Two on Joffrey Street, West Side was closed for 24 hours. And then on the 29th, Sub Three, Maud Avenue. Now, the question I have, Chief, what is your normal response time to a fire?
Uh, it depends what my trucks are doing and where we, where we at. There's so many variables in it, I can't really give you perfect time.
Okay. Here's my concern, it's a safety concern. If you get, if, on that Sub Two, which is on the west side of the river, we had discussion about this in previous administration, but if you would have to respond to that, that side of the river, there are a lot of elderly people that live over there, and you get to the bridge, the bridge is out. What happens? There's nothing on that side of, of the river at that particular time, and this has been done three times in a month of November. Now, let's take Maud Avenue, same thing with Maud Avenue, there are a lot of economically disadvantaged folks that have homes that are the best that they can have. A lot of these homes are wood frame houses. And if the fire catches there, how long is it gonna take for you to get there from the nearest station, and that time will be the main station, okay? Now, what's the reason for that? Why did you have to close those stations?
Main reason right now is because we short-handed.
You know, I can just, I can go into detail, uh, we have five open positions. We have three people on extended sick leave at this time, we have one person on extended vacation. We have a second one getting ready to go on extended vacation, so we, we are about 10 short, so...
And let me, let me speak, please. Councilman, at any point, if you had these questions, you more than welcome to come sit down in my office and ask them, since I'm in charge of the day-to-day operations. That's okay, but let me, let me, let me explain to you further. That Chief, Mayor and I meet on a bi-weekly basis and discuss plans of operation in the fire department, as is our jobs to do so. For months now, we have been talking about the shorthandedness of the departments, all the people out on extended sick leave, all the people retiring. Um, and we have been talking about creating a part-time position to fill those vacant positions. When the chief suggested that we could save overtime by closing stations in rotation, my question was, have we done it in the past? And he said, yes, we have. So we made an administrative decision to rotate the closure of statement of stations indefinitely until we fix the staffing problem. That's the answer to the question, correct Chief?
That's correct, but it's, it's the only way we could do it.
That's right.
And still provide a decent, we've been, we've been working shorthanded for the last two and a half years. We've been working with eight people some days. On a normal, when we have full staff, we normally have 12. But we are so short right now, we're working with eight people. And that's if nobody calls in sick, because we worked seven before. We do what we have to do. And God forbid, nothing has happened, my guys have taken care of business and we've done what we had to do. In each department, each part of the city. So it, it's, it's...
And when there's a fire on one, any place in the city, we call on other departments, just like other departments call on our department.
Yeah, that's not the point, there's no way you can respond fast enough on the west side if that station is out. There's no way that you can respond fast enough to save a life if you have to. Now, we also do medical emergency, we do cardiac arrest, right?
That is correct.
It's the same thing now, and then, and then, do you have any qualified applicants?
I had, I had three. One of them's gonna go be a police officer instead of a firefighter, tried to talk him out of it, but no. I got, uh, another guy that's from Alexandria's been calling me for six months. And I have a third one that left Youngsville, he's, he's asking to come. That's what I got. It's, 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 we've been asking for applications for months and months and months.
I've been posting them for a while.
It's been posted and I mean, we, 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 we trying, you know?
The application actually stays open on the website at all times right now, so it's always there and it's always seen, so people can see that they're, they're hiring, ongoing.
All three shifts are doing the best they can, you know, and...
But I'm also hearing...
God has been on our good side.
I'm also hearing that we try to save money too. Save money at the expense of a lot, I'm not for that.
Duly noted.
So... I know it's, I know it's...
I understand your concern.
Safety issue, now, what about our fire rating? Is that gonna go...
Have, have we failed to respond to the call in the times that we've been, has our, has our response time been delayed in the times that we've closed stations?
Not that I know of, I mean, I'd have to go back and look at them, but not that I know of. You know, and it all depends, because we all over town at, at different times, we training, we just in different places. So, but I, I can't call, recall nothing straight up, you know, right off the hand. So, but I mean, all three shifts are doing the best they can with what we got.
Appreciate what you're doing, Chief, and I know, uh, you and, and Chief Hoary have two different, very difficult jobs. But again, if, I think that we really need to focus on trying to either fill positions or, or figure something better than, than what we have now. Because when those stations are closed for 24 hours, that whole area. And now, the issue now that I, that I know about, you know, because of my age, I guess, but the, the space heaters, a lot of people still have space heaters. And there are a lot more fires in the winter, can't be, right?
We still have smoke detectors, Councilwoman.
Uh, that's right.
Give out smoke detectors, but I mean, I, I understand everything you're saying, you know, and my guys are doing the best, best we can with what we got.
Well, I agree with that, you know, I'm, I'm not saying you're not doing the best you can, I'm saying that we, as a council and the mayor's gotta figure out a better way to where their safety issue is resolved.
We've been, we've been talking about it and, and we're rotating right now because when the shortness is maybe on Maud Avenue, three shifts in a row, we don't close that station three times in a row, we kind of rotate it to kind of keep it moving around, so it's not the same station all the time.
So the station may be closed, but we have the additional personnel in the open station with the trucks.
If, if there's two people at that station like there's normally is, if there's, the station's closed, one person will come to the main and that extra person will work out of the main.
Yes.
So we're just down at one person. So, we, I mean, we trying, trying.
And I agree with him, every council's safety issue.
I, I understand, that's the most, protection of my people and the protection of this community is number one.
Ms. St. Julian, this is not a question and answer time, sorry. No, there's no question and answer during this period. No ma'am, you cannot, it's just the council and him, you can't after the meeting, off the record, yes ma'am.
I'll talk to you.
Yep, thank you. After the meeting.
Thank you very much, Chief. Thank you.
Anything else, Councilman?
That's it. Thank you.
All right, moving on, council members, Councilman Campbell.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I, uh, last council meeting, I made a statement about, uh, trail rides at the Red Barn. I did not say that we should not have trail rides at the Red Barn. When the incident with the horse incurred, there must have been twenty-five hundred people at the Red Barn. I personally saw them spending money in the city of Abbeville, so I would like for the Red Barn and us to continue allowing trail rides at the Red Barn. It's an economic thing for the city of Abbeville.
I don't, I don't, no one has come up to me and said that we shouldn't allow them at all, you know, like I, I've not had that comment from people.
Yeah, Facebook, you know.
Yes, yeah, okay, is that it, Council?
That's it.
Councilwoman Bruce Orin.
Uh, just, uh, tears the season shall be dropped. Listen, um, I'd like to just, uh, give a, a big shout out again, over and over again, to Vermillion Youth Group, um, to the Pawanian Club, to the Rotary, um, to all the people again who was special and donated for extra lights uh, for the city and Christmas decorations, um, thank you all. And, uh, if we're all looking for money, I would like to have at least two hundred thousand for my district right now, so... Let Santa Claus come early. Thank you all, that's it ma'am.
Okay, Councilmember Bruce Orin.
Thank you, uh, I hope it was a great Thanksgiving for each of you and your families and all of our viewers on YouTube. Special time for food, family and football. Uh, Thanksgiving lunch for the needy on Wednesday, November 26th, was a big success at the Saint Teresa Holy Family Center. I must compliment the Christian Service Center, the members here of the Vermillion Reach Group, which I am one of those members, Rotarians, and the city of Abbeville was represented too, and I was there with the mayor and Rainey. So, a wonderful charitable event that served more than three hundred needy with a fabulous meal of turkey, dressing, the sides, water, tea and door prizes. So let's not remember the needy in our community, and this was an example that can go far for these people. Uh, today, I want to mention that the city had a safety meeting, and we have those quarterly with two speakers and breakfast provided. Our Public Works Director, Chris Gootrow, leads that. The Insurance Committee of the City of Abbeville is very, very pleased with these safety meetings as that committee started the safety meetings in the city. And keeping our employees safe, not only in the holiday season, but year round. Two speakers today told them, gave a presentation on performing their jobs safely without accidents. That lowers our workers' comp premium, so thank you for that. And we hope you have a wonderful December and Christmas season, and we'll see you right back here in two weeks.
Councilman Plaizon, say.
Said enough, thank you.
All right, Councilman Hoary.
Here's your time.